Rewind to our city council meeting this evening. Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Bowson.
Here.
Mr. Nichols.
Here.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Here.
Mr. Childs.
Here.
Mr. Greider.
Here.
Ms. Wilder.
Here.
And Mr. Vois.
All right, and Mr. Vois let us know that he would be way away from the council meeting, with no access at all, so he has an excuse absence. Could you all join me for a moment of silence prayer? All right, thank you. Would you please join me for the pledge? Which will be... All right, please join, please join Kelly in the pledge.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented, as well as the minutes of the July 17th, 2023, regular session as proposed, and the minutes of the July 25th, 2023, special session as proposed as well.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have an agenda. First up on the agenda, I want to ask Chief Libo to join me up with Officer Jacob Bolstad. Well, very special honor. I will, I will first have you, if you want to talk about it, then I can read, read it first, and we can go that way.
I'm going to introduce to you Officer Jacob Bolstad. Officer Bolstad came to us in 2021, and I know everybody talks about our recruiting woes, but this is an example of some of the fine young officers that we've were able to get over the last few years to join our complement of officers and really improve the department. Officer Bolstad responded to a call that a gentleman had attempted suicide and was in distress and had a difficult time getting to him, and I'll let the mayor read the certificate, but because, as you can see, he's well-equipped, he managed to breach a gate, enter a door, and get to the subject and free him and save his life. So I'll let the mayor read the actual ready on the certificate, though.
Right, and I probably couldn't do that with the door open, so... This is the Waterloo Police Department's Life Saving Award to Officer Jacob. On Saturday, June 24th, 2023, officers were sent to an address for a suicidal subject. Officers arrived and found the area secure and were having a difficult time gaining entry. Officer Bolstad arrived and was familiar with the resident and the subject. Officer Bolstad quickly made entry through a broken gate, manipulated the locked complex door, and was led into the apartment by the reporting party. Officer Bolstad found the victim and took quick action, allowing breathing to be restored. The victim was then treated and transported by the Waterloo Fire Rescue. Officer Bolstad's knowledge of the area and subject, his preparedness, and quick action were instrumental in preventing more serious injury or death. And so, that's just an incredible tribute to the bravery, the heroism of our Waterloo Police Department and our Public Safety Department. But would you like to say a couple words?
I told you only eight minutes. I just like to think that the next officer behind me would have done the same thing. I mean, that's what we're here to do, is serve the public, and that was just another day on the job, so...
Thank you for your service. We appreciate it.
All right, is Stephanie in the audience? Please join us. Normally, this would have been read before last week, but I think it's important that we still acknowledge it for our National Night Out. But it says, "Proclamation, City of Waterloo, Iowa, whereas the National Association of Town Watch sponsors a community, a national community-building campaign on August 1st, 2023, entitled 'National Night Out.' And whereas the National Night Out event provides an opportunity for neighbors in Waterloo to join 38 million people in over 16,000 communities from all 50 states, U.S. territories, Canadian cities, and military bases worldwide. And whereas National Night Out is an annual community-building campaign that promotes police-community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie to make our neighborhoods safer, better places to live. And whereas neighbors assist local law enforcement through joint community-building efforts in supporting National Night Out 2023. And whereas it is essential that all citizens of Waterloo come together with law enforcement and work together to build a safer, better community. Now therefore, I, Quinton Hart, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, Iowa, hereby call upon citizens of the City of Waterloo to join neighborhood associations and the National Association of Town Watch in supporting the 40th National Night Out, which was last week, August 1st." So Stephanie is our Neighborhood Services Director. Could you tell us a little bit about what happened last night? But also, let people know how they can become more involved in Neighborhood Association.
So I definitely encourage neighborhoods to get involved. It's a great way to know who your law enforcement is. It's a way for us to build relationships. If you're in a neighborhood and don't know how to get involved, please reach out to me at Neighborhood Services for City of Waterloo.
How much is your number? And just to reiterate, you know, for about the, I forgot how many years we've been doing this, I don't see Rudy here, but our neighborhoods, you know, it's an important tool and vehicle to be able to have some levels of community change. I see Mary Potter out here, who can tell you first and foremost of how influential the voices of the neighbors are within our local community and how we can connect city services, be more accountable, as well to providing all of those needs and partnerships. And so, please reach out to Stephanie. If you don't know where, what your Neighborhood Association is, if you don't know how to be involved, please reach out to the Neighborhood Services Office, because we would like to see more people engaged, involved, in the happenings within our neighborhoods. So we want to thank you. Last week was the first time we made it to every one of the Neighborhood Associations. So we thank you for your leadership and council and staff. Thank you so much for taking time out of your schedules for us to be able to go and visit and talk with our neighbors. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Erica, would you please come up and join us for People's Community Health Clinic? So, how are you?
Well, how are you?
I'm good. All right, "City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation: Whereas, for over 40 years, People's Community Health Clinic has provided high-quality, affordable, comprehensive, comprehensive, primary, and preventative health care in our community, delivering value to and significantly impacting the health of local underserved, homeless, immigrant, refugee, and vulnerable populations. And whereas, one in every 12 people in the United States get their care in a community health center. And in the past year, People's Community Health Clinic served over 18,954 patients. And whereas, the health center model continues to prove an effective means of overcoming barriers to health care access, including geography, income, and insurance status, and in doing so, improves health care outcomes and reduces health care system costs. And whereas, health care centers are on the front lines of emerging health care crises, providing access to care for our veterans, addressing the opioid epidemic, and responding to other public health threats. And whereas, during National Health Center Week, we celebrate the legacy of the People's Community Health Clinic and their vital role in shaping the past, present, and future of our local health care system. Now therefore, I, Mayor Quinton Hart, do hereby proclaim August 6th through the 12th, 2023, as National Health Center Week." So can you talk to us about that?
Absolutely. So National Health Centers Week is something that we look forward to every single year. Two really big events that we're going to host are, is our Free Garage Sale. It was supposed to be held on August 6th, which was yesterday, but we know that the weather wasn't the best. So we've actually postponed that to August 13th. It's going to be from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. Anyone and everyone's encouraged to come and attend. We have free items to donate that have been donated by People's Clinic employees and friends of People's Clinic employees. Some really, really great things to give away. So we encourage all to attend that. And then we also have what's called our Big Tent Event. It'll be our 7th Annual Big Tent Event for community members to come and attend. There are, I believe, 20 to 27 vendors that have already approved to come and give away swag. We'll have a face painter there. We'll give away free food. So we look forward to seeing as many community members as possible at that event. The date is going to be August 10th from 4:30 to 6:30 p.m.
I just want to tell you, going through the pandemic, you know, it really gave me an opportunity to see the care and compassion of the folks that are making our People's Community Health Clinic so incredible. I've seen the leadership from your director, and I've just seen so many people hands-on, working with those within our community with the least of these. So I want to thank you so much on behalf of the citizens of Waterloo, our city and our city council. I want to say you're doing an excellent job and can't wait to, the construction is over too. So thank you so much, Erica. Thank you. All right, thank you. That is the conclusion of our proclamations. It is now time for public comments. Your opportunity to address the city council on non-agenda-related items. And one thing that I believe that we need to make note of, and that is C. Within our general rules for public participation, that comments shall be germane and refrain from personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks. And so, we have let, allowed a lot to go on here, and that doesn't equate. The truth can sometimes be hard, but slanderous remarks won't stack up. So setting the groundwork right now, the ground for that. So please, first up, to address the city council on non-agenda-related items, please come up and state your name and address for the record.
I'm Mary Potter. You've already heard my name mentioned. And I am a trustee of the Grouse Museum, and also am, 1416 West Fourth is my office number. What I want to do tonight is tell you how very important there is a certain thing in this town that many of you don't even know about, and that's the Grouse Museum, and especially the district. And I think that we need to, in some way, instill in our residents the importance of supporting that particular thing. It is a marvelous museum. You all see it when you come into Waterloo. You all see it when you go down University Avenue. And yet, I'm sure many of you have never, ever, ever been in it. So tonight, I want to encourage you to take part in visiting it. If you'd like to go just walking through it, call me or call Billy Bailey at the Grouse, and we'll be happy to just walk through it with you. Some of the things that are coming up within the Grouse are, we have a Vets Coffee every Wednesday morning at 10:00 a.m., and the veterans are all welcome to come to this. There is no charge. They provide coffee, and they give some kind of a little sweet treat each time. They won't let me in because I'm not a veteran, but all the rest of you can go. On Saturday, August 26th, one of our most fun things is the Tour of Homes. And that does have a price to it, but you are again supporting the Grouse and the old houses. And that's from 1 to 5. On September 16th, they have the Veterans Memorial 5K and 10K Races. So if any of you want to take part in that, just call again Billy or call me, and we would be happy to get you all the information on that. This is a fundraiser for the Grouse and for the Sullivan Brothers Iowa Veterans Museum. This is the thrust of the Grouse, and it's very important to Waterloo. On Thursday, October 12th, one of my favorite things is going to happen. We're having a dry-run sewer banquet. Back in the early part of our Waterloo, they had a sewer, and it was not yet put full of water. So 400 people gathered that night and had a banquet. Flowers, candelabra, you name it. This year, we're going to be putting that on as the 120th anniversary of that sewer banquet. And we'll be asking people like Quinton Hart to be our celebrity waiters, and he's nodding his head yes. So we will have a lot of fun. We'll have music. We'll have some celebrities there. Hopefully MSNBC will come and say, "I've never heard of a sewer banquet before, but I think I better go find out about it." And the museum school opens very soon. And Tim Hurley, right now, is trying to get with another people that are a part of his task force, get Waterloo identified as a World War II Heritage City. And that needs to take place because we are very, very unique in what we have. Last Saturday, all the sailors that were from the USS Iowa were hosted, and they had a nice meeting there. The Grouse has just recently been remodeled. You need to go over and see it if you have not been there. It's really a fantastic place, and I would encourage you to bring your kids along, your wife, your cousins, your neighbors, whatever, and we'll be happy to just walk through it with you. But it is a real hidden pearl of Waterloo, and we need to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Mary, where did Mary go? Mary, one of the questions are the location of the sewer banquet.
It will be at the Grouse. Only it will not be in the sewer, which I really thought they'd clean it out and we'd have it there, but it will be at the Grouse. We'll be, we'll be trying to showcase it, much as the sewer banquet would have been, and in a long line and all. And then we will have, we're working on caterers who will provide the meal. And again, this is a fundraiser, and we will be asking people to be our celebrity waiters. We'll be looking for musical talent. It'll just be a very fun time. I think you will want to be there.
Yeah, and please make sure, I have a very supportive council, so make sure they get the information to...
You're going to hear a lot about us in the next couple of months, I guarantee.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Hello, my name is Michael Bayer, 129 Prospect Circle. I would like to talk about the recycling drop-off sites. I am appreciative to the council for making those available. I do take advantage of them, try to sort my recycling and put it in the proper category as best I can. Recently, I visited the drop-off site that is east of Crossroads Mall, and I was frustrated and somewhat angered by what I saw. There are evidently people who are not following the rules, and I'm afraid that that will destroy the drop-off sites for the rest of us. So I captured a few slides, a few pictures that I'd like to present to you, to show you. This is styrofoam. The rules are still clearly stated at the drop-off site, no styrofoam. And yet, this is just one example of the styrofoam. Next. This is more styrofoam and film. There's plastic film and plastic bags, which the rules that are posted there also clearly say are not allowed. Next. These were a couple toilets that were sitting beside the dumpsters. And how they're supposed to be recycled, I don't know. And then the last, these are just trash bags sitting there. Now, I don't expect that the city staff can always enforce those rules, but I'm appealing to the citizens of Waterloo to follow the rules so that you don't destroy this opportunity for the rest of us. And if you see somebody abusing those rules, I'm told by the public work staff that you can call their office and report it at 291-4455. Please, I ask the residents of Waterloo, follow the rules for recycling, please.
And, and thank you. And it's, you know, we, we debate on how to secure it, but also debate on whether or not to keep having it. It serves a good purpose for the 95% of the folks that actually uses it, right? And the other 5% that abuse, that it really makes it tough to continue. So thank you for that. And I think, are we, are we, how close to cameras are we? Not that one? So yeah, okay. But thank you, sir.
My name's Dwayne Eilers, total five and a half Bishop Street. I came in and talked last week about the properties on Lafayette Street that the city falsely tagged me for the neighbor's properties. Didn't tag the properties to the other two adjoining properties that had weeds clean over my head. And the city falsely refused to do anything to their own property that had joined three doors from me. The weeds are running right down the sidewalk, two feet over my head. But they claim we, the citizens, have to do what you say is a violation, but yet the properties you have are in total violation, worse than anything that we have. My vines are too close to the sidewalk with my big ticket, and I had a tree leaning over the alley. Well, take a look at the 50 properties that I viewed that the city owns. Every one of them is in multiple violations. And the one I'm talking about is on Lafayette Street, just a couple of doors from me. And yet, I brought that up. You as the mayor that runs the city, and you the city attorney that issues these tickets to me because my vines are too close to the city? You don't do nothing yourself. So you're running us to do whatever you want, and you don't do nothing for us, the citizens. That's why you see all of these people asking that we don't need a mayor. We need a city manager. We don't need a mayor, because he's done nothing but increased our taxes, our water bills, our fuel bills, or everything. He's done absolutely nothing. He talks about slander. People slander him, telling the truth about what he does and doesn't do. He don't clean up city properties. And the city attorney prior to him said, "If you don't pick up the garbage, I brought the names and everything to the city," and he said, "You don't like it, sue us." That's what your city attorney said. That's the same garbage you left over on my other property for 10 months. I couldn't get to my property. 10 months, garbage. Oh, all enforced by the city code saying, "We have to notify him. We have to go to court. We have to give him an extension of time. We need more time." Then, the city street department did not come and clean it up. Took months and months and months. I've lost the use of my property for almost a year. Still got nails in the driveway, still got big cement pillars laying next to my fence. Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else that would like to address the mayor and council? Please step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Michael Blackwell, 5125 Millennium Drive in Cedar Falls. Over the past six council meetings, Reverend Larry Stummey and I addressed three issues: dilapidated housing, the eyesore of St. Mary's School, and the lack of completion of environmental and cleanup of contaminants at the Chamberlain Site. These concerns only scratch the surface of the multiple and cumulative effects of years of racial discrimination that have adversely impacted residents primarily of Northeast Waterloo and the entire Cedar Falls Waterloo metro area. The reports of 24/7 Wall Street regarding the worst cities for Black Americans to live over the past six years have placed our metro area variously from 1 to 10 on its list of the top 20. The placement of our area may have initially been surprising, but the facts of institutional and systemic racism have existed since the arrival of blacks in the Cedar Valley of 1911. The racial disparities here have been so prevalent that they have often been regarded as something merely to accept as the way it is, rather than assiduously to seek to eliminate them. However, accepting and/or ignoring these disparities is negligent, unethical, and unconscionable, for they negatively infringe upon the quality of life, not only of Black people, but also of all who live, work, and visit in the area. The issues may seem to be overwhelming to address, but those ostensibly insuperable circumstances should not deter us from taking on the responsibility to redress them. To this end, Stummey and I come to the council meetings to encourage the cities of Waterloo and Cedar Falls to intensify efforts to rid us of the disease of racial injustice in the metro area on a consistent and ongoing basis. We are committed to serving people and surveying the people in the affected areas and then organizing around the priorities they identify with the help of Citizens for Community Involvement out of Des Moines and local agencies interested in affecting social justice. Thank you. Thank you. I do want to make a point of personal privilege. Reverend Stummey had a heart attack on July 22nd and then had successful open-heart surgery on the 25th. He was discharged on the 31st and is at home recuperating. And so he wishes he could have been here today, but his spirit is always with us with these concerns. Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
So I just want to let folks know, I will be having a constituent forum on August 17th at the Waterloo Public Library. Now, because they're doing some renovations, we will be actually up on the second floor in the conference room past the reference desk. So again, that's August 17th at the Waterloo Library, from 7:00 to 8:00 PM in the conference room on the second floor, and everyone is welcome, more than happy to talk about any concerns or questions or comments that folks have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I just wanted to, since that we have a public hearing on the library renovations, I believe A and B might be open.
No, they won't. I, I talked to library staff.
Okay.
Yeah.
So what, I mean, it's, yeah, we can pick it up later. You could tell us when that portion comes on, the construction timeline and which, which conference rooms will be open. All right, thank you.
That's it, sir.
Now, somebody want to close public comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close public comments.
That motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. A motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public comments closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to pass the consent agenda with the amendment to 1A1 bills payment in the amount for Monday, August 7th, 2023 of $5,930,746.61.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. That is an electronic vote.
Okay, they passed.
All right, they passed unanimously, so, all right, let me see what we have in here. Uh, yeah, we have a few appointments, actually. Uh, let me see where they start at. So, uh, motion proving appointment of Christopher Alvarado to the position of GIS technician for the engineering department. If you're here at the end, you can stand up. We have Brad Minnehall for the Assistant Director of the Maintenance CT Appointment, which also has some clean energy in it as well, so that's exciting. Nicholas Roof to Solid Waste Technician, the appointment of Mike Herrickes to the Property Safety Inspector. We've been waiting to see that position filled. And a motion approving the appointment of Kenny Van Deest, I believe, Deist, the Equipment Operator in the Street Department. So if any of you are here, would you please stand up? All right, thank you so much. Forward to an incredible relationship. Thank you for joining the, the team. All right, what else should we have? All right, let's begin with number one, the most anticipated on here, the library renovation project.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion, receive and file proof of publication, notice of public hearing at the Waterloo Public Library, 2023 Interior Renovation Project Contract Number 28439. Second, sir.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to comment on the library renovation project? Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file any oral or written comments. Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plan specification, form of contract, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed. Second.
That motion has been made with the second. David, would you like to get up and comment on if the Room A and B will be closed or open? It seems, and just talk a little bit about the project. We haven't really seen you in here. I know this is an important project you guys have been working pretty hard to secure, so.
Uh, David Eckert, Library Director. Well, what we're trying to really do is, it started a little while ago, in 2021, we had a space assessment done and there was a professor from the University of Iowa that came and looked at our space and how we used it and also interviewed some people on staff and with all of that, she made a recommendation to take our children's department, which is basically on the right side when you come into the building, and to move it around 90 degrees and go across the whole back of the front of the first floor. And then she suggested that we build some sort of a wall for safety reasons and a few other reasons to sort of identify and define that space. And so the plans include trying to build a wall back there. The one area back off to the left, when you come into the library, is, is pretty dark, so we also included putting in two new windows back in that area and it'll allow us to use one of the, we really actually have three meeting spaces, A, B, and C, but C has always been the hive, which is our maker space, and so we moved that up to the second floor. But now the C will be a dedicated children's area, programming area, and so we'll use that and to put another window in there. And then we also now have a teen area up on the second floor and so we, we love our teens, but we want to see our teens, but we don't necessarily want to hear our teens. And so the idea would be to also put up a glass wall, sort of defining that space around there. So that's really what the plans are. And then over the course of maybe nine months, we went out and we secured money from six different granters, all pretty locally in the area. We secured about $211,000 towards this project and so, and then we also had some money that were, was given to us by the Friends of the Library. So, yeah, we're pretty excited about it.
Well, I think it's pretty cool. I mean, we had a talk a long time ago about libraries' ability to reach out to other places, seek additional funding to try to help aid some of these projects. And so, you know, this project is a realization of the hard work and effort that you and your team have put together, but also it's really good to see your staff out in the public, in the community. I know we went to National Night Out and saw your team there, so really engaged in the community and we really appreciate all your efforts in your department, but that may not, that may not help succeeding in getting this resolution approved, but we just wanted to say that.
Yes, so, so in answer to your direct question, the reason that A and B, we temporarily have closed those down is we're gonna need to put all of the children's material temporarily into Rooms A and B during the process of this construction, because we're trying to put new carpet in, we're trying to give them enough space so that they can put the wall up, and yet we still want to have access for people to get to it. So unfortunately, that, that crams up a little bit of our meeting spaces, but we have a lovely spot up on the second floor and we have been thinking about using temporary spots around in the, in the building. We might buy some temporary rolling walls and things like that, barriers to try to help with that, so, yeah, we just have had to limit that down a little bit, but.
All right, thank you very much, sir. All right, council, questions, comments? All right, thank you.
I did a quick comment, sir. I'm just gonna ask Mr. Eckert, if, if this doesn't proceed, because I was at the bid opening, will you still be moving your children's stuff early or are we gonna wait until it's rebid?
So I think what's happening right now is we had a emergency meeting and the bid that came in well exceeded what we thought it was going to cost, and so my board basically rejected that one bid that we had. And so ISG is the architect firm and they're gonna go back and see if they can't reevaluate and maybe take some things out of that original bid, because I believe by law, we're allowed to take out 40% or more and then we can rebid it again. So we're gonna try to rebid it. So we're gonna meet on the 17th of August and hopefully they will come with some options for us so that we can rebid it and hopefully still move forward. Now, of course, if we don't move forward with it and we, and we can't do anything at all, then we would open back up the meeting rooms from that point of view, but everything's a little bit on hold in, in that sense, so, yeah.
Thank you. All right, council, anyone else? All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion, receive, file, and instruct the city clerk to read bids.
Well, we have to.
Oh, approve that, authorize and proceed, okay.
Yep, so we have a motion to adopt a resolution. That is an electronic vote. Please cast your votes. You want to give us a verbal?
Yes.
All right, that was approved unanimously.
Now, make a motion, receive, file, and instruct the city clerk to read bids. Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Madam Clerk.
All right, our engineer's estimate was $75,000. We received one bid. It was from Wood construction of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided 5% security and their bid amount was $372,300.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd adopt a resolution approving the recommendation of the Waterloo Community Library Board to reject all bids in conjunction with the Waterloo Public Library 2023 Interior Renovation Project Contract Number 28439. Second.
That motion has been made with the second. This is electronic vote.
Just as a clarification, can I make clarification to the bill? There's a yes vote, reject it?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Recommendation to reject all bids. Sorry.
The pass.
Thanks for that clarification. All right, so bids have been rejected. All right, could someone take number two, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion, receive, file, approve publication, and notice of public hearing for the asbestos abatement services contract number AB-2023-07-02P for property located at 212 Sunnyside Avenue and 1318 Martin Road. Second.
All right, that motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to comment on asbestos services for said properties? Going a second time.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing. Second.
That motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, adopt a resolution confirming approval of plan specifications, form of contract, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed. Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Council, any questions, comments on these, on this item? All right, that is an electronic vote. Please cast your vote. All right, they passed unanimously.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, receive, file, and instruct the city clerk to read bids. Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Madam Clerk.
All right, our estimate was $26,000. Our first bidder was All-Star Environmental of Dubuque, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $10,995. Our second bidder was Echo Midwest of Hastings, Minnesota. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $18,120. Our next bidder was Site Services Incorporated of Algonah, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $8,560. And then finally, our last bidder was Advanced Environmental of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $12,300.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution awarding the bid to Site Service Inc. of Algonah, Iowa in the amount of $8,560 in construction, in conjunction with the Asbestos Abatement Service Contract Number AB-202307-02P for properties located at 212 Sunnyside Avenue and 1318 Martin Road, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, this is an electronic vote. Cast your vote. All right, that was approved unanimously by council. Thank you, counsel, for supporting asbestos abatement. Could someone take number three?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that's for the sale and conveyance of city-owned property to A and K Ventures LLC in the amount of $1 with a phase development and minimum assessment agreement in the amount of $624,125 for the construction of a new 6,500-square-foot building and a future 6,000-square-foot addition located northeast of 3151 Titan Trail.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to comment on this particular item? I don't think, see anything on file. Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close hearing and receive and file oral and written comments.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving the sale and conveyance of city-owned property located northeast of 3151 Titan Trail to A and K Ventures LLC in the amount of $1 and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, questions on this item?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Could we define, or loosely define, future and the minimum assessed value, does that apply to the 6,500-square-foot building and the future building or just the 6,500?
Mr. Anderson.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. The value would be for the 6,500-square-foot building. We would expect that a new minimum assessed value would happen with the addition or the assessor's just gonna, remember it's a minimum assessed value, so the assessor can always raise it. And then the future addition, I believe it was a five-year timeframe, that's what they're looking at.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else? All right, this is an electronic vote. Please cast your vote. All right, that passed unanimously by council.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a development agreement and minimum assessed agreement with A and K Ventures LLC for the construction of a new 6,500-square-foot building and a future 6,000-square-foot expansion with a minimum assessed value of $624,125 for Phase 1 and authorizing mayor and city clerk to execute that document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, if you don't have any questions, please cast your votes. Noel, I was just thinking too, it's been a, been a while since we got on the road and kind of taking counsel together as a group. Maybe we can try to put something together where we get out and start to see some of the projects and some of where some future development is happening too, so it's been a while, so we'll try to get something organized next month or the following. All right, that passed unanimously. Could someone take number four, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion, receive, file, approve publication, notice of public hearing, request by Freedom Truck and Trailer Wash LLC for site plan amendment for the truck and trailer washing facility in the BP and Business Park District located southwest of 3124 Titan Trail. Second, sir.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to comment on this item on the agenda? Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments and the recommendation of approval of the planning, program, and zoning commission. Thank you.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion, receive, file, and consider pass for the first time in ordinance, amendment to the ordinance number 5079 as amended City Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in Section 10-4-4, approving the request of Freedom Truck and Trailer Wash LLC for site plan amendment for Truck and Trailer Wash facility in the BP Business Park District located southwest of 3124 Titan Trail. Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, questions? All right, this is an electronic vote for a trailer wash. All right, this is an electronic vote for a trailer wash, truck and trailer wash. All right, that passed unanimously.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. It's an electronic vote. All right, thank you, that passed unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion considering pass for the second and third time and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. If there's no questions, counsel, please cast your electronic vote. All right, that passed unanimously. Could someone take number five, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Um, let's go, Mr. Childs.
Mayor, I move to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing and that is for fiscal year twenty twenty-four West Airline Highway Railroad Crossing Repair Project Contract Number ten ninety.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The public hearing is now open for the railroad crossing repairs. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on railroad repairs? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
To close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mayor?
Sir?
Moves to adopt the following resolution confirming approval of specifications bid document form of contract, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, do you have any questions on this item? All right, that is an electronic vote for the approval of specifications. Please cast your vote. That is approved unanimously. Thank you, counsel.
Mr. Mayor, I move to receive file and instruct the city clerk to read bids.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Madam Clerk, please read the bids.
Okay, our estimate was eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred thirty-eight dollars and fifty cents. Our first bidder was Veth Construction Corporation of Cedar Falls, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was ninety-four thousand, seven hundred fifty-eight dollars, fifty cents. Our second bidder was Boulder Contracting LLC of Grundy Center, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was sixty thousand, one hundred six dollars and seventy-five cents. Our fourth bidder was Lodge Construction Incorporated of Clarksville, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred eighty-five dollars, ten cents. And then our final bidder was Peterson Contractors Incorporated of Rhinebeck, Iowa. They provided five percent security and their bid amount was seventy-nine thousand, sixty-eight dollars and fifty cents.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Like to adopt a resolution approving award of bid to Boulder Contracting LLC of Grundy Center, Iowa in the amount of sixty thousand, one hundred six dollars and seventy-five cents, approving the contract bond and certificate of insurance in conjunction with the fiscal year twenty twenty-four West Airline Highway Railroad Crossing Repair Contract Number ten ninety and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, questions on this item anymore? That's an electronic vote, please cast your votes. All right, thank you, that passed unanimously. All right, number six, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing and that's for the sale and conveyance of city-owned right-of-way to Grant Park LLC in the amount of one dollar with a development and minimum assessed agreement in the amount of two million, two hundred thousand dollars with a rebate schedule of eighty percent for years one through five and seventy percent for years six through ten located at twenty-seven seventy-five Crosswoods Boulevard for the construction of a new ten thousand square foot commercial building.
Second.
All right, that motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this item on the agenda?
Forest Dilavu seventeen twenty-five Huntington Road. Is this a property that formerly was Long John Silver's Building?
No, you want to get up and talk about the project a little bit for Mr. Dilavu?
I've got a few comments if that is.
Yeah.
Noel Anderson, community planning and development director, yes, it is.
Okay, I assume that Long John Silver's was paying taxes on that building and any other city assessment that we had. The city has since bought it, I guess, tore it down, and now we're going to give it away for one dollar. Whereupon something else will be built and the something else is probably good, but we paid for this property, we paid to tear it down, and we're paying interest on that money that we borrowed to do that with. And we will continue to pay until there's money in that TIF to start paying back, which will be never because the crossroads center is going down. They're losing their last renter, I understand, or their biggest renter in the very near future. So any taxes they pay will only come in after ten years. So we're going to pay interest on all that money for ten years and then we're going to get tax off it, but the tax that we get off it will go into the crossroads TIF, which means there will be nothing to help with the local budget. The general fund, the general fund is starving. We know it is, we see it is, and this is just another one of the same way we do things. We give away these agreements, they are not good for the citizens, they are wonderful for the developer, and if you're trying to build your resume, they look good for the city because we're doing building, but we're doing it on the back of the taxpayers of Waterloo. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, would you like to talk about the project and where the funds come from on this as well?
Noel Anderson, community planning and development director, so we did not buy the site or demolish the site, that was done by the private developer, so he did purchase that out. The portion of land to be sold here is actually additional land that we would have acquired back when Highway four twelve was transfer of jurisdiction over to the city of Waterloo, so we've gone through the three oh six point two three process of the state code to be able to sell that for the one dollar. So the city actually has no money into this project right now, it's being redeveloped by Howard Allen, which is Grant Park LLC, so we will see a large gain in taxable value on the site.
All right, thank you for the clarification. We, we. So city didn't buy the property, nor did nor did the city demolish it, so just wanted to clarify that for the record and for those looking. All right, anyone else that would like to comment on this particular item? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Did you want to? Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close hearing and receive and file oral and written comments.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution approving the sale and conveyance of city-owned property located north of twenty-seven seventy-five Crossroads Boulevard to Grant Park LLC in the amount of one dollar and authorizing mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'm wondering if we're putting the cart before the horse and maybe that this should be delayed until the twenty-first because we have two items on the consent agenda that relate to this for public hearings on the twenty-first. And I'd like to see us do it all at one time so that we don't have an issue if something comes up on the twenty-first. I think we should postpone this until August twenty-first.
Noel, was there some time constraints on this project or? There's also not one of them leave.
They are looking to establish some other financing with their banks with the approval of the agreement tonight, agreed that the the vacate portion will still go through on the twenty-first, but they did want to try to move it through. If the council does want to move this back to the twenty-first and do everything on the same time, that'll probably work for them as well.
So I would like to make a motion to postpone this public hearing until the twenty-first and do all three on the same night.
Second.
All right, so amendment to postpone. Any questions about postponement?
So we would be postponing, just to clarify, the two resolutions? Because we've already done the hearing.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
What kind of delay will that cause in the movement of the progress?
Does this have a, sorry, I'm sorry, does this have an impact over a portion of getting finances or, I mean, they pretty much demolished and has some money in this already, so.
Yeah, I mean, they've been moving ahead with it. Like I said, they wanted to move ahead with with the next step of establishing the building. The vacate will follow, which is according to their site plan, it gives them the ability for additional parking and the drive-through portions of the design. But I think they could probably make either one work if if the council wants to do it.
I just have one more comment.
Yes, sir.
And I also wanted to to make a comment as far as the taxes because Mr. Dilavu was up there talking about it, they're still going to be paying property taxes on the original.
Because right now, we have the amendment to postpone any other comments, so the folks can go either way, they do want to move to start doing some portions, but Noel, you said they're okay. Sir?
Mr. Mayor, is this vote that's on here for the postponement?
Right, that's the that's the amendment that's before us right now. So yeah, just trying to only take questions about the amendment at this point and any type of ask Noel the impact of the delay, so it's counsel's discretion on this one, so for the, oh, you already got it, so.
That passed.
It passed four to two this time, so it's postponed to the twenty-first, so Noel, please let them know cities, well, their support for the project. All right, and Mr. Bowzen, did you want to clarify something as well before we move on?
I appreciate, I just want to clarify one of Mr. Dilavu's comments about the taxes because Noel can actually speak to this, but we're going to get taxes on the land on the, what we're getting, what we're receiving right now. So it's not like we're, correct, Mr. Anderson, it's not like we're not going to be receiving money that these that these tax abatements are on the difference of the assessed value that's coming up.
Noel Anderson, community planning and development director, that is correct, the base value will remain there for the land value, which is about nine hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Bowzen. Could someone take resolutions one through three?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Like to make a motion to adopt the following resolutions. Number one is resolution approving and authorizing a form of loan and disbursement agreement by and between the city of Waterloo, Iowa and the Iowa Finance Authority and authorizing and providing for the issuance and securing of the payment of four million, forty-five thousand dollars in sewer revenue capital loan notes, series two zero two three B of the city of Waterloo, Iowa under the provisions of the Code of Iowa and providing for a method of payment of said notes, approved approval of the tax exemption certificate and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Next is a resolution regarding a special election on the imposition of a local option sales tax and service tax within the city of Waterloo, Iowa. And three is a resolution approving the refundable advance for construction of underground electric service extension in the amount of seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred eighty dollars and twenty-nine cents for use with Mid-American Energy for electric distribution to serve existing homes, proposed splash pad and amphitheater at the Gates Park located near East Donald Street and Mildred Avenue in conjunction with the FY twenty twenty-three Gates Park Improvement Project Contract Number one zero seven six and authorizing the mayor to execute said document.
Can you take number four too?
As well as number four, which is a resolution approving a purchase agreement with Boland Recreation of Marshalltown, Iowa in the amount of fifty thousand, two hundred forty-two dollars and forty cents in conjunction with the fiscal year twenty twenty-four Gates Park renovation amenities purchase and authorizing the mayor to execute said documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Does anyone have questions on items one through four?
David Dyer, thirty-one forty-five West Forest Street, actually on one, two, and three. It says here, providing a method of payment on number one. What's that method of payment? Doesn't state it here and on other resolutions I've seen like this, it actually said where the money was going to be acquired from.
Okay.
Number two, that local option sales tax, I read the article in the paper about that and I'm opposed to taking it out of our street repair fund because we all know streets are crap, a lot of them anyway. And the refundable advance on number three for construction of underground electric service, usually someone will put out the effort and the money and expect their money to come back. Reading deeper into this, it sounds like we're giving them money to put this in and then we're going to get it back over a long period of time. Why are we funding something that a private business is promoting, or I won't say promoting, we're probably promoting the development, but at the same time, I feel they should be getting their money back over the period of time rather than we getting our money back when we front the money for them to do their construction. Thank you.
All right, thank you. The first one, Bridget, would you please talk about the providing for a method of payment of said notes so we can give some clarification for Mr. Dyer?
Bridget Wood, finance director for the sewer revenue capital loan notes, they get repaid with sewer fees.
All right.
They get repaid with sewer fees.
All right, thank you. And Paul, you want to talk about the questions of refundable advance?
Paul Hudding, leisure services director. This underground electrical service is required to do the project properly, so we would have been paying to do this, to do the improvements that we want to do in any event. There is one private residence that is also going to have to be fed by the underground because we no longer can have the overhead wires in the park for this development. So basically, the refundable portion of it is as we pay utility bills over the next six years, they will refund up to this amount over that time period. But again, this is something we needed to do regardless, so it's an expense that we had already budgeted for.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
And counsel, any questions, comments? Madam Clerk, this is an electronic vote for items one through four. And if there's one you're not in agreement with, let us know, we'll make that distinction. All right, that passed unanimously. Thank you, counsel. Five, six, and seven, please.
Mayor?
Sir?
Number five is adopting a resolution approving agreement with Bottling Group LLC Pepsi Beverage Company for the purchase of Pepsi products for leaders service facilities and authorizing the mayor to execute said documents. Number six is a resolution approving professional service agreements with Impact Seven G of Coralville, Iowa in the amount of six thousand, eight hundred dollars for archaeological investigation in conjunction with the FY twenty twenty-three Hammond Avenue Bridge Replacement over St. Crink Creek Contract Number nine twenty-two and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Number seven is a resolution approving agreement with Mid-American Energy in the amount of nine thousand, eight hundred ninety-one dollars and twenty-six cents for the purchase and installation of two streetlights to be located in the corners of Levece Road and Hyperdrive and Levece Road and Warp Drive and authorizing the mayor to execute said document.
All right, that was five, six, and seven. Is there anyone that would like to comment on these items?
David Dyer, thirty-one forty-five West Forest Street, number six. What are we looking for? Is there possibly something that's going to interrupt this project, stop the bridge construction? It's kind of vague as to are we a snail darter or a weird frog or?
I'm going to step out on just a small little, little plank on this one. I probably, if we didn't have to do this either, we would probably rather continue on with the project with Jamie. Do you, you want to give a comment on this? I know Hawkeye is really waiting for this project to move forward.
Jamie Knutson, city engineer, the federal funds require us to do these sorts of investigations, so until we have this done, we cannot get our permits through the DNR and the Corps of Engineers.
Yep, and we've been communicating with folks from their team as well, but looking forward for this to be done so we can move forward on that project, which is delayed, right? All right, counsel?
I just had a question.
Yes, sir.
For Mr. Knutson on that project also, because it seems like this has been going on for three years since that bridge has been closed and I'm wondering, since we're using federal money, I mean, could we have not gotten this done sooner or did we have to wait until the Army Corps and the St. Crink?
There's been also some acquisition, there's a lot that's gone into this, but Mr. Knutson?
So anything that could go wrong with this project has. It started out with non-federal funding through the DOT. Once the IIJA got passed at the federal level, the DOT had to change some funding around, so then it became federalized, which made us start back over with the whole process. We did get our letter yester. We did get our letter yester, Friday, excuse me, from the Corps of Engineers. We finally have what we have to purchase as far as stream credits. They'll be coming back to council for about $30,000 in stream credits that we have to purchase as part of this. Again, all these things are requirements through the DNR and the DOT and the Corps of Engineers. And once we start that process, it takes at least six months to get us through that. And i- it's just taken a lot more than that. This thing is, some of the floodplain studies that we were doing, they're in the process of changing the floodplain maps out there. So then it got to be issues with, with the DNR. And that was six months delay there on which floodplain maps to use, the old ones, the new ones, and all the things that we were having to do. So it's just been one minefield after another. But we're finally getting to the point now with, with, once we get through this investigation, hopefully, we don't find anything. We get through that, then we should be, that should be our last hurdle, and then get us to the point where we can start getting through to construction, getting it let through the DOT.
So best, not to hold you to it, best case scenario, when?
I did that a while ago.
If, that's, that's a loaded question, Mr. Bowzen.
Answer it like Noel would.
I will, I, here, the best answer I can give you, if I was supposed to answer like Noel would be, we should be under construction by next Christmas. No. I'm hoping, I'm hoping that for either a, maybe a December or after the first of the year, that we'll be starting that process. So I, I really don't see us getting to construction until summer next year. That'd be my best guess.
This is one of those projects where a lot of frustrations, you know, ultimately, the finger points here. But when you're working with a ton of federal agencies and things change during the course of the project, dollar changes, the way you have to document, and all the things that you need to do, extremely frustrating. So I know our engineering department has been working during their due diligence, but it's been a challenge. So the quicker we can say yes on this, the quicker we can move to the archaeological survey. So any other questions? All right. That's an electronic vote for five, six, and seven. Please cash your votes. All right. That passed unanimously. Could someone take eight, nine, and 10, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Adopt the following resolutions. Then a resolution approving a professional service agreement with INS Group Incorporated of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount of $15,000 in conjunction with the Waterloo Convention Center restroom renovation project, and authorizing the mayor to execute that document. Number nine, a resolution approving amendment number five to the development agreement with Deer Creek Development LLC, originally executed October 13th, 2006, to make an annual, to make annual appointments in the amount of $300,000 per the agreement, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. And number 10, a resolution approving a development agreement and minimum assessment agreement with BBP Development LLC for upgrading and renovation of an existing commercial building with a minimum assessed value of $743, $743, $750 with a rebate of 50% for five years located at 2945 Airport Budalard in the East Waterloo Unified Tiff District, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute that document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Is there anyone that would like to comment on this item?
Can I just say me again? David Dyer, 3145 West Forest Street.
I have amnesia, so no.
I tried. Number eight. We did a lot of work in a, in a convention center already, but none of, no restroom renovation was included in that whole ball of wax? That's, okay. I guess a little bit at a time. And then number nine. How many years are left for this $300,000 payment? And I looked back in and it was $200,000 last year or whatever. To go to the developer before he has all of his money back? And how much tax money are we getting off of this property to start with that helps us pay $300,000 a year?
All right. And just really quickly to number eight. Yeah, there's, you know, some accessibility issues with the bathroom. So we're just trying to strategically go back and do, like you said, pieces at a time. So we knew this was coming. So. Mr. Anderson?
Noel Anderson, Committee Planning and Development Director. In terms of the amount of time left, I want to say we're at like two years left with Deer Creek for payments. We did for the ANK project that you saw a little bit earlier. We also had a previous office building, SKS Communications, built on a lot that we put into that agreement debt to get to more projects. So it's, it's, it's working to have the shovel-ready projects. Since the partnership with Deer Creek in 2006 to make the former Greyhound Park area as a, as a development site, the city has worked to bring in over 12.1 million in new taxable value jobs, construction activity permit fees, local option sales tax activity, a lot of projects to the area. So we are seeing a lot of new taxable value created in that. Remember, it was formerly vacant land when Deer Creek bought it. So that's how we're, we're setting it up for the additional payments and getting additional land for projects.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to eight, nine, or 10? Going a second time? Counsel questions, or do we?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
Not a question, just the excitement to see the bathrooms being done in the convention center. They need to be done pretty badly. So I'm looking forward to seeing that paved over.
All right. Thank you. I looks, you know, you compare it to what, three years ago? Looks like a completely different place, so.
Yes.
A great work. Thank the citizens for paying for it. All right. This is the electronic vote. All right. That's the unanimous vote. Thank you, counsel. Eleven, 12, and 13, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to adopt the following resolutions. First is a resolution approving an easement review agreement with Century Inc. for the assessed assessment and release of easement IA-AFN 447631 and utilities on city-owned property located west and north of 2122 West Ridgeway Avenue in the amount of $1,500, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. Number 12, a resolution approving an easement review agreement with Citroleak for the assessment and release of easement IA-AFN 1991-00012726 and utilities on city-owned property located west and north of 2122 Riss Ridgeway Avenue in the amount of $1,500, and authorizing mayor to execute said document. And number 13, a resolution approving a passenger facility charge application with the Federal Aviation Administration for the authorization to submit and impose and, and submit and impose in use application in the amount of $444,782 for providing the 10% local match for the fiscal year 2023 pavement rehabilitation and pavement reconstruction projects at the Waterloo Regional Airport, and authorizing the airport director to execute said documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this item? Going a second time, or counsel? This is an electronic vote. Please cash your votes. All right. That passed unanimously. Could someone take the rest of these items, 14 through 17?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to adopt the following resolutions. Number 14 is a resolution approving purchase agreement with Reliant Fire Apparatus, Inc. for the purchase of one replacement fire truck in the amount of $905,300, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. Number 15 is a resolution approving the sale of salt slash sand snow removal inventory for the Public Works Department in the amount of $6,266 to the City of Evansdale, Iowa. 16 is a resolution approving a professional service agreement with Willett Hoffman and Associates of Cedar Rapids, Iowa, in the amount of $14,000 in conjunction with the US 63/Logan Avenue Traffic Adaptive Project with the intersection of Newell Street slash Congress Street to Donald Street, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. And lastly, number 17, a resolution approving refundable advance for construction, for construction electrical service extension proposal in the amount of $24,374.56 for speculative use with Mid-American Energy for the construction and provision of electrical lines along Warp Drive in conjunction with the Waterloo Air and Rail Park Project, rescinding resolution number 2023-300, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Is there anyone that would like to comment on these items?
Wayne Nathan, 548 Coedale, Waterloo. On the number 14, is this in addition to our fire equipment or to the replacement?
Where's our fire chief at? Yes, sir. First or second time, right?
Build Back Fire Chief, this is actually going to be a replacement for engine 306, which is located at Amesboro and Ridgway at Station 6. Station 6, currently, the apparatus that they're using is the old 301. It's, I'm trying to think, I'm blanking on the year. It's roughly 15 to 17 years old currently. It's had a good life, but it needs time to be replaced. So this will be a replacement. We are not, unless I miss something, we're not adding a new station.
Thank you.
My, my next question would be, I can understand that the equipment needs to be replaced periodically and so forth for... Okay. Is there trade-in value to this? Or how, how will you dispose of the one that you're replacing?
So more than likely, this engine that we will be replacing will go into reserve status, and we will use it when other engines are down. And then the oldest of the reserve trucks that we have will then be sold. Resale for them is not spectacular, but we, here in Waterloo, we used the life out of those engines at the time. I would venture to guess the engine that we will replace is 25 years old, if not older.
What, 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 an idea when, when you go to sell this? Approximately, what do you expect to get out of this money-wise?
Well, we go, typically, we'll use it through an auction site. We get the best results out of there. It really depends on the seller. I would expect around $10,000 we'll get, but that's not anything that I'm based off of.
And so, so do we take the one that will be out of commission goes to being a backup? And the one that was the backup, which is really, really outdated? That's the one that's so, this is a more reliable backup in case something happens to one of the trucks?
Correct. The one that we'll be selling, we technically have out at our training center. We use it with new recruits. It would not pass our annual pump testing.
Right. Right. So, all right. Thank you.
That concludes what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counsel questions?
One, one quick question.
Yes, sir.
For, for the fire chief. A chief, a while ago, the council approved, the council approved a down payment. I believe we already approved a down payment for this truck.
Correct.
So my question is, is when we approved the down payment, did that put us in the queue?
We are, we are in the queue now. They can't, how, how I was, it was explained to me is because we did a down payment, we get money back from that. It's around $25,000 to $28,000 off the price. But they can't give us a contract until they get the check. They, they assured me that they, they've gotten the check and they're set.
Okay. Because the, the part that I was astonished by is that it's about a three and a half year wait for delivery. It's 30, it's, it's like 40 months?
36 is what they quoted me.
Okay. I was just going by the, the data here, but.
Right.
We're still going to keep that truck in service for another three years.
Absolutely.
So that'll put us at 20 years on that truck.
That truck will be over 20 when it's over.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Chief. I also recall that there are times when you can use some of the parts off of the really old one to kind of reassure some of the newer ones.
Absolutely. The $905,000 doesn't come with anything. I think we have to probably fill it full of fuel, too. We use, we do budget for new fire hose, but there are things that will be taken off, replaced. The truck that we are buying is not identical, but very close to the fire truck that's at Station 3. The truck that is currently there now looks a lot like, well, it doesn't anymore. It's our old rescue truck. So it will be built differently. We will use a lot of the things off of that. Our reserve trucks are very sparsely stat, or equipped. So things like the air packs that we use, those will all stay with the station, if you think it that way. All, everything on the truck is the stations. It's not that trucks necessarily.
Thank you. Anyone else? That is an electronic vote for those items. 14, 15, 16, and 17. All right. That was unanimously approved. Could someone take number one in ordinances?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive file and consider and pass for the first time in order in amending the City of Waterloo traffic codes by repealing subsection 46 Martin Luther King Jr. Drive of section 45, or 541, increasing speed limits in certain areas in its entirety, and inserting in lieu thereof a new subsection 46 Martin Luther King Jr. Drive of section 541, increasing speed limits in certain areas.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Questions on this item, anyone? Yes, ma'am. Please come up to the podium.
Beverly Cosby, 315 Window Court, Waterloo, Iowa. You're going to increase the, the amount of mileage to drive down Martin Luther King when that, that Martin Luther King is already a speed zone? So why would we want to increase the speed out there? There's been how many horrific accidents along Martin Luther King Drive? And the speed limit is, I, I think right now is kind of moderate. So why would we want to increase that to increase the opportunity of more disastrous accidents?
All right. Mohammed, would you like to talk about what's taking place?
Mohammed Alahid, Traffic Operations Interim Director. What we set the speed limit is what, what we call the 85th percentile speeds. That is what 85% of the drivers drive at or below that speed. What it means, 85% of the drivers are logical enough to drive for what the environment is safe at that or below that speed. 85th percent speed limit in that portion of MLK was 50 miles per hour. So we need to set the speed limit. What, what, where the 85th percentile speed is. Now, if it's lower, we'll lower the speed limit. If it's higher, we raise the speed limit. And we did check the accidents. There was nothing that's related to speed at that portion of the roadway that we are increasing the speed. So what it is, why, why do we do this? Is because we wanted drivers to drive at or about the speed limit to respect this, the law, respect the speed limit sign. Right now, it's 35 miles per hour, and everybody's going 50. I mean, 85% of people are going about 50, and they're getting a lot of tickets there, too. So, and there's a lot of reasons for it. So that was the main reason.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions? Not particularly, but, okay. Normally, it's, once we did, but you were under three minutes. You have another quick question? Because we, what we don't want to have is people going back and forth with department heads. So that's why we like all the questions. Please come to the podium, speak in the podium so that people can hear you and we can have it on file.
Beverly Cosby, 315 Window Court. Okay. So if I'm understanding, he's, what he's saying is, okay, it's 35, so now people are driving 50. So you up the, you up the mileage to 50, they're going to drive 70. So to me, that, that, that really doesn't make a lot of sense. It's encouraging more speeding and more, more of a likely to have accidents out there. And I know of one horrific accident.
That was speeding.
Right there on Martin Luther King Drive. So I'm just saying, you, we up at the 50, they gonna drive 70.
All right. Thank you. All right. So today, we only have the first consideration. So if counsel wants to pass one reading today and not do the... and not do the suspension to give it some time to settle in, that's your discretion. So right now, we have the motion to receive and file up for a vote, uh, please cast your electronic vote.
Mr. Mayor, I know I should have said something before, but it's too late, I've already voted, so.
Um, no one, we, yeah, so wait just one second. So that passed, let me see, that was passed, uh, 4-2, uh, with, uh, Councilwoman Creighton Smith and Councilman Greider, uh, with no votes. Now for the suspension, suspension of the rules.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, Mrs. Creighton Smith?
Okay, what I wanted to ask Mr. Mohammed to talk a little bit about is that human beings typically do, did I say Mr. Mayor? I did, didn't I?
No, you said Mr. Mohammed, but.
Mr. Mayor, I would like Mr. Mohammed to speak to the issues about human psychology because typically that's exactly what they do. What, what are we putting in place to ensure one that that doesn't happen and that we can't? Then to penalize those who are taking advantage of the, uh, increased speed limit?
Wish you want chief to put out Rambo. No, it's been out there before. Uh, Mr. Mohammed, if you want to just talk about, uh, by increasing that, what have you seen from your study or the psychology of a driver? Uh, what, you know, why is this, uh, a safe speed for the area? And, you know, are we talking about near the school or we, where are we talking about as well?
Okay, the 85th percentile speed limit, setting a speed limit as, at what 85% of people drive at or below, it's a national thing, and it's been there for, forever, it's nothing new. And the thing is, we have reduced this speed limit? When it, the 85th percentile was lower, lower, the people going slower, like on Franklin Street, we, we reduced it from 30 to, 35 to 30 miles per hour. Or part of Idaho Street, we actually reduced it and some part of it we increased it. Because we want people to respect the speed limit sign and drive within that. And that's been proven, I mean, it's nothing that, yes, if you accept that people, 85% of people drive at what they feel the environment is making safe at that speed, that's what's based on. So, uh, it's based on people's psychology in, in a sense that they feel, okay, if I go this, this is speed, I'm safe. Speed limit sign has never, ever been able to reduce the speeds, never. You can enforce it and it'd be good for a few, maybe days, couple weeks, but people go back what they feel is safe to drive at. So it, it won't, that's why we have like speed hump policy. We don't just, the speed limit is 25 miles per hour, but people are going, going 35, 40. So we reduce, we do a speed hump, it's called the active speed reduction measure. Without any active reduction measure, nothing else will reduce the speed, the actual driving speed.
Rambo, um, so, so this is, so this is the question, so that, um, those that may not be familiar, like, I don't know all, all of everything about it, but for these roads and for these streets, you do comprehensive studies to take a look at accident information related to people following the existing conditions and not being outside of those existing conditions. You take a look at, uh, the amount of passengers that flow through those areas. So there's a comprehensive study that's done. And from your study, 85% of the people drove at 50 miles per hour. And so if 85% of the people drove at 50 miles per hour while it was 35?
Yes.
Does that create even more unsafe conditions versus?
It's, it's the overall effect of it, a lot of, again, it probably has to do with psychology. If you learn to disobey the law at one location, you, you, two things, you try to despise traffic signs and traffic laws, not just the speed limit signs, but all kind of signs. Because it, obviously, people are not respecting that 35 miles per hour. And we are encouraging them to do that, by keeping it at 35.
And so, so if this, so if this passes, right, and it goes through and it's 50, you come back in a couple years and if you see those numbers change or accidents pick up in a particular area due to people following that, that speed, then you'll come back and make another adjustment. And you've done this throughout the city, you named Franklin Street, you named Idaho Street, you named another number of, uh, other areas as well. And if I can ask one more question, unless you have another question? All right.
I don't know if it's a question. Mr. Mayor, I remember some meetings back, uh, there were individuals who were complaining about the, um, photo enforced, and they were saying that they were going with the flow of traffic. Um, the environment seemed to suggest that they could go faster and they were penalized for doing so. Um, so I just wanted to kind of throw that in there, I guess, to complicate things, I don't know.
No, I just mean everyone got a ticket. Yeah, so I think, um, like, what I didn't realize, um, was the amount of thought that's put into, uh, the level of work that's being done in that area. And to Mrs. Cosby's point, um, if we, if there is a pickup because of this change of accidents for those that are following, you know, working within the traffic rules, then, um, there's some measures that can be put in place when this comes up to be reviewed again. And I know we just sent the letter out to wanting to have truck traffic be able to easily flow through this area versus going, uh, through neighborhoods. And so the hope is, um, there won't create any other problems, but also in a way of being able to really work hard to pushing that traffic out to that northeast site, uh, in that direction as well. So, uh, I'm pretty sure you got some council members who have accidents pick up and those things that'll let you know as well.
And, and, uh, I welcome anyone else wants to come out later on and I'll, I'll explain to them, I can discuss things with them, so.
And, and really quickly, just because it was mentioned about problems, um, or challenges that there may be, um, there's a process if people, um, in other neighborhoods too, want to try to get you to look at that, what's that process while we're talking about trouble?
Best thing is to go online if they have access to internet and write down what's the problem. Otherwise, they can call our office, 291-4440, or, or send me an email. But best thing is just to go online, report the problem, uh, or have a comment on C's website. That gets to us right away.
And, and, yeah, people need to know, um, so we need to continue to expand that so people know, uh, these problems and maybe others that we may see. There is a process to having you to take a look at it and you review all the streets like you did with this one. So, thank you, Mr. Mohammed.
Thank you.
All right, uh, counsel, a motion to suspend is up, uh, could you cast an electronic vote? All right, so, uh, we'll pick that up at the next council meeting, that, uh, you, almost, uh, four people voted to post, uh, to not suspend the ro- rules and we had two, uh, that voted to move it forward, but it'll be back in two weeks, so, um, I'm sorry, counsel, if you can give me just a small bit. Uh, on April 9th at 4 o'clock, um, the, I mean, August, same, that's what I said, don't correct me, I'm just.
I heard August.
24?
Yeah, April of next year, no, um, uh, this week, Wednesday at, uh, 4 o'clock at Prairie Grove Park, I believe, uh, the corner of, uh, West Fourth Street and Shawless, uh, we will have the, um, groundbreaking, ribbon cutting, all of that, uh, to begin for Waterloo Fiber. All of you have been engaged, uh, Telecom is moving forward with that project. So if you have an opportunity to make it out that day, I'm pretty sure Telecom Board and others would love to see you there. Uh, this is a huge step, uh, for the city of Waterloo, so just wanted to make sure you all, uh, knew that, so. Mr. Kreider.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion being made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn, thank you.